Okay, good evening. Today is Wednesday, June 8th. And I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Jollette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, we have one proposed add-on. It's number 22. Request to approve the purchase of office furniture utilizing the Omenia Partners Cooperative Contract Form Office Express for fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's all I have.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Support.
Who made the motion?
Charlie.
Charlie. Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the agenda as amended. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state that I'm asking for an update on the assorted federal litigation in the next two meetings or so, if that would be possible. I've got some concerns over the rates of expenditure on that litigation. And I think the board should be apprised of the status.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. That's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the bill run? Okay, motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the previous meeting minutes from May 25th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the previous meeting minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we are on public comment. If anyone present wishes to make a comment on anything on the agenda, this is for agenda items only, please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anybody participating remotely, please digitally read your hand, and you will be called upon. Anyone present? I don't see anybody present. Anybody remotely?
No, sir.
No, no public comment, so we will move on. Uh, next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is a public hearing. So this is a public hearing number two for the Chelsea Park Drive Newcastle Court and Amesbury Drive Road Replacement Special Assessment District. This would be SAD number MA-101P. Following that, we will have, we have a request to adopt a resolution. So at this time, I am going to open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to comment. And time is 6:34. So, um, Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Um, the, uh, at this point, the, uh, the, uh, roll has been available in the clerk's office for the last month. Uh, and that's based on the estimates that we had gotten from the Department of Roads, based on the bids. Um, the total cost of the project that would be spread amongst the residents is three-hundred-six-thousand, four-hundred-eighty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. And that would be divided up according to the assessable front footage for each of the parcels that are within the district. So at this point, the township board needs to, uh, hear from the public, and then, once they've heard from the public, decide on what, um, you're going to do with resolution number five, which would be the adoption of the roll. It would direct the treasurer to then bill the residents for, uh, the improvements. There are three items that the board would need to decide tonight. Um, one is the interest rate, the term of the loan essentially, and then the first date that the, uh, payment, the first payment is due. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board before we turn it over to the public? So at this time, if there's anyone who wishes to make public comment on the Chelsea Park Newcastle Court and Amesbury Drive Road Replacement SAD, please make your way to the microphone. I don't see anyone present. Anyone remotely wish to participate?
No, sir.
No. So I think that's no public comment on this item. I'm going to close the public hearing. The time is 6:36 PM.
Chair, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number five.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
At, at this point, I think the board needs to, um, decide on those three items.
We have to fill in the blanks, correct?
Yep, included in the resolution. And then, once those three items have been decided, then the board can, can vote on the adoption of the resolution.
Just state those three items again. We have the term of years.
The, the term, so the number of years that the payments will be collected.
The interest rate.
Interest rate that will be charged for any of the payments that aren't, any of the outstanding payments. And then the date that the first payment is due. So, for example, June 1st of, you know, 2023, let's say.
Okay.
Chair, I guess I make a motion that we adopt the term of, uh, for the SAD of fifteen years. Start with that motion.
You want to do all three items at once?
We can, uh...
Make a single proposal?
The, the interest rate, uh, the three different interest rates I don't have before me that we proposed. Do you have those available, Jim, the three interest rates?
I'm pretty sure I know what it is, but I need to...
Why don't we double-check that before we officially adopt it?
So Leon, do you, do you want to, um, I guess for the sake of the public and any of the board members, review what these items were in your discussions with?
Yes.
Engineering department and the residents of Chelsea Park?
Well, as you know, the, as many were, the residents of Chelsea Park had approached the board and, uh, asked for some assistance with their road improvement. It's in very poor condition. Uh, they've collected the signatures. They've collected an adequate number of signatures in support of it. Uh, and we, uh, the residents had a meeting about a, maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago, uh, which I attended. And residents asked a number of questions. We were able to gather some of those answers, email them out. Uh, the, my indication from the residents is they prefer it a longer term to reduce the burden because unfortunately, the estimates came in higher than we would have liked. Uh, so make it a, uh, a little less of a burden. The request was for a longer term. Uh, so I had the deputy of our office, uh, reach out to a number of banks to calculate what would be a rate that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, cost the township money, but doesn't earn the township money either, just with the fair market rate at a non, you know, profit market rate. And they came up with three different rates based on length of term.
So what was the fifteen-year rate, Mr. Van Tiflin?
The fifteen-year rate was three-point-two-seven percent.
Okay.
Okay. So I suppose the motion would be appropriate for a fifteen-year SAD at an interest rate of three-point-two-seven percent?
And the construction is expected to be completed on what date?
The, the Department of Roads has told us that the construction would start in early October and would be finished up by the middle of November.
So would a, would a June 1st, 2023 be appropriate?
Yeah, typically, I think in, in the resolution, it says that all the subsequent payments would be, uh, due on June 1st. So I, I would say, I would recommend that the board go June 1st of 2023. That way, it's after the construction has been completed.
Okay. So I suppose the proper motion would be to adopt resolution number five, uh, for a term, with a term of fifteen years and a mortgage, or interest rate of three-point-two-seven percent, with, uh, with the payments beginning June 1st, 2023.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Got y'all that? All right. Is there any, is there a second on that motion?
I'll support, but I do have a question.
Sure.
I think we, in previous discussions, we talked about the term being that if it's too long, that the road could already be deteriorated, and they're still paying for it, and we might need to fix it again. Is fifteen years, in your opinion, Mr. Van Tiflin? I mean, is that far enough, uh, close enough to say that it's not going to need repair again?
I'm, with the new county road standards, I think fifteen years is a fair number. Uh, there are a number of developments that I've seen, uh, since they've changed the standard, that have lasted the fifteen years. Not to say that there aren't, you know, some issues here and there, but I don't think to the extent that we've seen in, before that standard was, um, was changed. So I, I, I think I'm comfortable with this. We've had a lot of internal discussions about, about this. It, it, it's a risk, but I, I, I think we're, it's a low risk at this point.
Thank you.
I think there, just an opinion there, you know, within fifteen years, there may be potholes, but I don't expect to see, I'd be very, very disappointed if we end up anywhere near the condition the road is in. Sure. You know, in fifteen years.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I defer to Trustee Oliver, but he's deferring to me. Uh, is there a, uh, an interest rate associated with a twenty-year term, or is, was that explored at all?
I don't think so. I think twenty years is, was beyond our comfort level.
Yeah.
The discussions we had, but again, the longer the road is there, the more likely it is that there'll be some damage or wear, and even some level of deterioration. And you get to a point where new homers move in, let's say at the fifteen-year mark, and they're wondering why they're paying a SAD for a, uh, a road that may have some significant wear to it.
We did research and calculations in a ten-year, a twelve-year, and a fifteen-year terms.
Okay. So is general ballpark figure, what are we looking at annually per household for the fifteen years at three-point-two-seven percent? As the payment on a three-hundred-six-thousand-dollar?
Mr. Van Tiflin has the estimated rolls, I think, in front of him.
Obviously going to vary by footage, frontage.
You're looking for the annual payment?
Yes. Uh, do ballpark figure, understanding that they vary according to the frontage?
Annual per household?
Yes.
So I believe it's around the eight-fifty, nine-hundred annual right, amount.
Yeah, it looks like it ranges from six-twenty-seven on the low end to nine-forty-one on the high end. Just depends on how much frontage the parcel has.
And, and this would be an improvement to the property values of those homeowners, given the fact that it would diminish the value if the roads continued to be in the condition that they're in disrepair as we speak today.
I think that's a fair, fair conclusion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Trustee Oliver?
Yeah, just one question. I think the public needs to know. So obviously, we, we did not get a hundred percent of the people that voted for this. Roughly, what, seventy percent of the residents?
I think, I think it was over that.
Yeah, it was an excess of seventy percent.
Officially, it was eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine percent?
It was...
There were two that were out of town, and it would have been over ninety percent.
Good. But the ones that did not vote for it, they understand they're still paying for this district.
They are still obligated.
Okay, and we're making that real clear with them.
Yeah, any SAD, you know, for the public's sake is fifty...
We know that.
Yeah, just for the sake of the public, any SAD only needs fifty-one percent of the households to participate.
This is, I can, I mean, I've been doing this a long time. This is the highest number that I've ever seen in a special assessment district ever.
Really high, yeah.
So this was very overwhelming support. Um, the two gentlemen that are here from the Homers Association have done a great job of communicating with their people. Um, after the last, uh, hearing, they've, they had a Homers Association meeting with, they invited them all. Um, not all of them came. Um, they gave the information. I think, uh, Mr. Jollette was there. Um, so we, we've given them every opportunity, you know, to hear the information and, and understand the, the reasons why the, the costs went up recently. Um, so I, I, we're comfortable moving forward with this.
Oh, I, I think it's great. At, at that high of a rate, I'm with you. I, I've never seen that.
Yeah.
Ever. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Any more?
Yep.
One more question.
This was kind of like the first one of future, um, projects that might happen. Does this decision and resolution bind us as far as the terms or anything? Obviously, not rate. Rate can change.
Every time, every time is, every time we approach one of these projects, the board gets to determine the rate of payback.
Yeah, thank you.
The ordinance, or rather, the res, was approved by the board stipulates, uh, twenty-five percent of the cost, up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, as long as there's adequate funds in the budget. So there's three conditions.
But we can set this anyway.
Yes, this will vary.
Each time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with no more questions, we have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt resolution number five with a fifteen-year payback term at three-point-two-seven percent. Payments to begin June 1st, 2023. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Jollette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Congratulations to Chelsea Park on a successful application to our first-ever road improvement project in a subdivision, so. Moving on to the next public hearing. This is for our 2022, 2023 fiscal budget. Um, at this time, I'm going to ask Township CFO Stacy Smith to present.
Good evening. Um, first, I want to apologize for some confusion. I know there was a version five that was circulating. But that version had some, but not all of the changes that may be discussed tonight. So version four dated 5/12/22 was the one we were talking about and used at the last public hearing. And so for sake of, on May 19th, for sake of clarity, um, any changes that are discussed tonight, that's going to be the working document that the changes are made to. Um, currently, I have three, three proposed changes. Um, one in the general fund for a small reduction in the Treasury Department budget of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Um, in the DPW fund, an increase in line item 591-537-816.000 for consulting fees. Increase that line item for an additional five-thousand dollars in anticipation of a, um, possible water connection study. The public improvement fund, uh, the board ha, has allowed, um, use of one million dollars for improvement to our parks. So originally, we had budgeted one million dollars for next year, but they had started spending some of that in this fiscal year. So last meeting, we did an amendment to move about fifty thousand of that this fiscal year. So I would like to reduce next year's by about, by fifty thousand, bringing it down to a total expense of nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So at this time, those are the only changes that I am requesting.
Okay. Any, thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there any questions from the board before I open up the public hearing? Nope. Okay. At this time, we are going to open up the public hearing on the budget for next year. Uh, the time is 6:48 PM. This hearing is open. So if there's anyone present who wishes to speak on next year's budget, please go to the microphone of anybody remote, uh, participating remotely. No? Okay, so there's no questions on the budget. I'm going to close the public hearing. The time is 6:48 PM. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to move on to item number nine. Um, this is a request to approve amendment number four to the Water Services Contract between Great Lakes Water Authority and Macomb Township. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Johnson?
All right. Good evening, Board. Uh, so every four years, Macomb Township engages in a conversation with Great Lakes Water Authority to go over the contract and how much, uh, basically, uh, two factors that we, that go into our rates, and that would be max day and peak hour. Max day being how much water we use in a given day. And then peak hour is the flow rate, which is how much water flow we use in a given hour between three-month period, between June 1 and August 31st, which is the peak time in a year. So what our, uh, what our township did is I, uh, DPW worked with engineering, went through the last six years of data, and took out, make sure there's no anomalies for water main breaks, fires, things of that nature, making sure the data was sound. And in doing so, we found that we were able to reduce both the max day and peak hour numbers, um, by one-point-six million gallons a day and one-point-seven respectively. So max day went down by one-point-six, peak hour by one-point-seven. And what that does is, all the communities right now from Great Lakes Water Authority are all in contract negotiations. So there's a, a pie, and we're all vying for a piece of the pie. So as we lower our numbers, it might not necessarily lower our rates per se, but it potentially could. But we're just trying to provide the most cost-effective, uh, water for the residents utilizing, uh, these rates. So with that, also, I, I sent an email out that Appendix A was redacted in this, uh, because of the fact that there was extensive detail on the locations of where we're connected to Great Lakes Water Authority. So that was removed, or removed, not redacted. Um, and at any time, this contract, um, it is a four-year contract, but can be, it can be, um, updated at any time, given any major conditions. Like if a high-water user comes in, it can be updated anytime, so. Um, but for this, this point in time, it's a four-year, this is a four-year contract with being able to lower the max day and peak hour, uh, by about one-point-six. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just a quick question, if I may. John, we're, we're voting, what we're, the decision we're making is the termination on what we want to request as far as peak hour and peak day. So we're not voting on the rates, obviously, just for public clarification.
This has nothing to do with rate. Correct. This is not rates. This is just the, the max day, peak hour. Nothing to do with, with rates whatsoever.
So we're stipulating what we anticipate to be our, our usage in those categories.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
But to be fair, our, our usage could affect rates down the line.
Right.
Correct.
Just for reason I asked, I don't want people to confuse this discussion with Highland Park issues or other issues that are not related to this, this particular discussion.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question to the chair. Um, it's my understanding that this is a part of the body of the contract, that we're supposed to do this every four years and engage in that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this is just our end, or our, our good faith estimations and where we're heading for those two items? Peak usage and also maximum daily flow?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve amendment number four to the Water Services Contract between the GLWA and Macomb Township. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Moving on to item 10. We have a request to approve an alter grade for parcel, um, 0834-400007. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Uh, the owner of this property, which is the northwest corner of Card Road and Hall, um, is requesting that they be allowed to alter their grade. Um, if, if you remember, that parcel, if you've been over there, that parcel sit, sits a little bit lower than what Hall Road does. Um, when it goes to, when, when the property owner goes to develop it, they're going to have to bring in fill material. They want to do that filling before, uh, as part of a marketing, to market the property better, so that the, the future property owner doesn't have to do that, uh, when, when the property's developed. Uh, they're taking advantage of some of the roadwork that's going on, the M-59 project, the mound road project. There's extra dirt that's being generated from those projects, and the fill can essentially be brought there at very little cost to the property owner. So, um, this item and then item 12 are essentially the same thing, uh, actually the same property owner. And we've reviewed the engineering plan, um, for the alter grade and, um, have no objection to it and are recommending the board's approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any other questions?
I have just one question. Is there any effect to the adjacent parcels for runoff?
No, that's one of the things that we reviewed, uh, the, the plan for. In this particular case, there's very little frontage on an adjacent property. There's a big floodplain detention area, um, that's near, uh, the Mobile Home Park, uh, in that, near that intersection. So this will have no effect on the adjacent properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the alter grade for parcel 0834-40007. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11 is a request for the supervisor to sign a quick claim deed to transfer Macomb Street, um, which is a part of parcel 0809-300015 to the Leoni Companies. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Miss, yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Um, this, uh, right-of-way is Mc, uh, an extension of Macomb Street that's next to Town Hall, um, over where Luckman Road, um, would, would run north and south in, in the future by Cracklewood Golf Course. Um, back twenty years ago or so, when that development was built, that road was intended to be public. Um, because it wasn't connected to any existing public road, the county wouldn't accept the right-of-way, the responsibility for it. So the decision was made at the time that the township would take ownership of the property and then transfer it at some future date to the county for them to own and maintain the road. Uh, as development has happened in that area more recently, uh, it has come to our attention that when that road was built, the county never inspected it. So the county's position at this point is they will not accept the road as public, uh, because they didn't inspect it. So in order for this not to be, right now, the township owns the property, for this not to be a township road, we are recommending that the board transfer the land back to the developer so that they can then incorporate it into the master deed for the condominium, so it becomes a private road for the Homers Association to maintain. So the document that's before you has been prepared by our engineering consultants, legal descriptions and whatnot, and then the township attorney prepared the, the actual deed. So we're recommending that the board approve this so that we can start the process of transferring that land back over to the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve, authorize the supervisor to sign a quick claim deed to transfer Macomb Street to the Leoni Companies. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12 is a request to approve the alter grade for parcel 0834-300017, which is the east side of Macomb Center Drive. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Uh, this property is just down, uh, M-59 from the previous, um, item number 10. Um, same situation. The developer has some fill material that they'd like to bring in to raise the grade up so that the property is more marketable for future development. They've given us a plan. We've reviewed it to make sure that it meets all of our requirements. Uh, it does, so we are recommending approval by the township board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions or discussion?
One question, same as before, no effect to surrounding?
No, no, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by trust, uh, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the alter grade for parcel 0834-300017. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13 is a request to approve the site plan for the Old Town Hall relocation. This is B4 parcel ID 0809-200018, which is located just south of Town Hall here. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box, you going to give us this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, as you all are aware, the, the township, uh, has sold Wade Nursery Property, uh, the former Wade Nursery Property. Uh, that is where Old Town Hall currently sits. Uh, as part of that agreement, the town... As part of that agreement, the township is retaining the right to keep Old Town Hall, but obviously we have to remove it from that property. It's been determined to go here next to the current Town Hall to kind of finish out the town square. It would sit directly across from the rec center. This is the site plan that was prepared by the Township Engineering Consultant. It was reviewed by the Town Center Committee and recommended for approval unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Box. I just want to note on one thing, the actual moving of Town Hall has not yet come before the board. If and when we get there, it will, but we're still working out logistics. We put some stuff out for bid. None of the actual moving part of it has been determined. So this is just in preparation for the time when we get to that point, which we're hoping to very soon, but it's been a little bit of an uphill battle.
Also, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just remind Board Members that we did have a generous private gift of $75,000 to help accommodate the moving, so we're trying to work within a budget.
Any questions? Okay, motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the site plan for Old Town Hall relocation on parcel 0809200018. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 14 is a request to approve the preliminary plan for the Bluffs at Riverside. This is permanent parcel ID numbers 0823251003 and 0823276009. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is a preliminary plan for the Bluffs at Riverside. It's a single-family residential development just west of North Avenue, south of 23 Mile. This has actually been before the board previously and approved. The developer has since purchased an additional parcel that they're going to be combining with the original parcel to get a few more units into the overall development. So they did go back to planning commission for their review, and at last night's meeting, it was recommended unanimously for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the preliminary plan for the Bluffs at Riverside on parcels 0823251003 and 0823276009. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15 is a request to approve the third amendment to consent judgment for Elite Corporate Park. This is permanent parcel ID 0820100018. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is an amendment to a consent judgment that was previously approved. This is property south of 23 Mile, just west of Romeo Plank. Part of the original consent allowed the front two units to be used for restaurant purposes. They are requesting now to use the front two units for a car wash use, and that's the bulk of the change within this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the third amendment consent judgment for Elite Corporate Park on permanent parcel 0820100018. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 16 is a request to approve the first amended consent judgment for Romeo Plank Investors. This is for permanent parcel ID numbers 0817477001, 0817426003, and 0817402005. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This amendment to another consent judgment involves the former Wade Nursery property as well. You may recall that when the township sold it, they actually sold it in two parts. This is the piece that would be east of the river. The piece that it will be combined with has an existing consent agreement on it, so they have to amend that consent to show that that development would grow by the portions sold to them from the former Wade Nursery property.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the first amendment consent judgment for Romeo Plank Investors on permanent parcel IDs 0817477001, 0817426003, and 0817402005. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Box. Item 17 is a request to promote a probationary firefighter. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Chief.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm recommending this evening your approval to promote probationary paid-on-call firefighter Joseph Reptius to the position of paid-on-call firefighter. Probationary firefighter Reptius has successfully completed his 12-month probationary period and is recommended for promotion by the Probationary Development Committee and myself. If approved, his promotion would be effective as of June 9, 2022. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to promote probationary firefighter Reptius. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to Item 18. We have a request for a charitable gaming license for No Limits Fishing. Motion?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, Board Members. The township is, sorry, didn't mean to jump the gun. The township has received paperwork from No Limits Fishing requesting that the board adopt a resolution for a charitable gaming license. Even though they're, the boat is based out of Clay Township, they are registered here in Harrison Township where the individuals live, and there's a requirement from the state that has to, the municipality where they reside is where it has to be adopted from. They have supplied all the appropriate paperwork, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
So there'd be no limits?
Zero limits.
All right. Any actual questions?
And just to clarify, it's a Macomb Township, not Harrison.
Jeez, old Pete's, I'm sorry.
Old school.
That is a bad flashback. I apologize.
He's already home on the couch, that's the problem. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve a charitable gaming license for No Limits Fishing. Members, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
Thank you, Board Members.
Motion, that resolution is adopted. Item 19 is a request to approve the purchase of media storage devices from Electric, Election Systems and Software in the amount of $10,514.67.
So moved. Support.
Clerk Posey, you going to take this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Due to the elimination of modem transmission of election results to the Macomb County Clerk's Office and implementation of other election security measures, this purchase is necessitated for additional storage devices. Election Systems and Software is the only vendor from which customers may purchase these proprietary devices. And the state of Michigan election security grant funding will be utilized to recoup the cost of this purchase. I'll be happy to answer. Any other questions?
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Any questions or discussion?
Are these basically just really powerful zip drives?
Crypto flash drives, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of media storage devices from Election Systems and Software in the amount of $10,514.67. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 20. We have a request to set the 2022 millage rates for the township. We're going to be taking them individually, so before we get to the motions, I'm going to ask Stacy to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Tonight before you is a request to set the 2022 millage rates. The general fund operating millage rate at 6.258, the fire operating at 1.900, fire pension at .0900, police at 1.5000, and the park and rec millage at .7625. And as Mr. Viviana said, they all need to be done separately by roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So do I have a motion for the 2022 township operating millage to be set at .6258 mills?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to set the township operating millage at .6258 mills. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That, these resolutions, that resolution is adopted. That millage rate is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I request that we set the 2022 fire operating millage rate at 1.9000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to set the fire operating millage at 1.9000. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that millage rate is established.
Mr. Chair, I request to set the 2022 fire pension millage at 0.0900.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to set the fire pension millage at .0900. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that millage rate is established. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, I request to set the 2022 police millage rate at 1.5000 mills.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to set the 2022 police protection millage at 1.5000 mills. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that millage is established.
Mr. Chairman, I request to set the 2022 parks and recreation millage at 0.7625, and if second, I'd like to speak briefly.
Second.
Just to speak briefly by means of clarification, the millage rate authorized by the voters ends at the end of this calendar year, which doesn't align with our current budget year. So this millage would apply up until essentially December 31st, and then depending on what voters do with the requested lower millage coming up in August, that lowered millage would then be the one that would apply moving forward.
For the rest of the calendar, for the rest of the fiscal year.
The rest of the budget year, so.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any other discussion or clarification? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to set the 2022 parks and rec millage at .7625 mills. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that millage is established. Moving on to the 20, to the 2022-2023 budget.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move, hold, wait a second.
We have a couple of things here. Before we do any motions, I'm going to let Stacy present again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. As I mentioned in the public hearing, I have three changes that I would like to make to the preliminary budget before we adopt the final budget. And that was to the Department of Public Works Fund, Public Improvement Fund, and General Fund, which would have an ultimate decrease in total expenses of $46,450. So I asked the board to make a motion to make that adjustment prior to adopting the Appropriations Act.
So, Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to forward a motion to adopt the changes as stipulated by the CFO?
That would be appropriate, yes.
I'd make that motion.
Support.
Any discussion on those changes? So we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to amend the proposed budget as detailed by the Township CFO. We're doing voice votes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the broadcast media budget by $211,627.
Is there a second?
I'll support Trustee Cusmano.
Is there any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to reduce the broadcast media budget by $211,627. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to fund a full-time IT position in the amount of $151,572, inclusive of all salary benefits and taxes. I just want to make a note that the salary would be up too, based on the qualifications of the individual.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Support. The only comment I have on this is this is a budget item, the actual position. If and when we get there, will then be brought before the board, and the board will approve the final salary and what that position might be. This is something we discussed in our open meeting at the first public hearing for the budget.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate that, it's my understanding that there's been some trouble with the current vendor and that it's been deemed by the majority of team members in Macomb Township that this is in the best interest of the township and prudent to have an IT member on staff and available to troubleshoot.
That is a correct assessment of our discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, it's not necessarily trouble with the contractor, it's just, it's not fulfilling the needs of the township as a whole.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll clarify slightly and say the anticipated relationship going within all vendor-managed IT service has not gone as anticipated, and we are now seeing a need for an onsite township employee to help us manage that infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw the adjective "trouble."
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano.
Tim's got to pick on people. Okay, any more discussion on that? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve a budgeted IT position in the amount of $151,572, inclusive of salary, taxes, and benefits. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, motion passes. I would like to make a motion to approve an employee retention bonus in next year's budget, which will be effective July 1st. This will be for all full-time employees in the amount of $600 per person, and for all part-time employees that were employed as of January 1st of 2022 through and still employed as of July 1st, 2022, in the amount of $250 per person. The anticipated amount of this retention bonus is $86,350, inclusive of all, I believe it's inclusive of all taxes and salary.
Yes.
Support. You supported? Who supported? Any questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've gone over this many times in my head, and I don't want any of my comments to be construed as running down or denigrating the township employees and team members. But I will note that the township negotiates collective bargaining agreements that a great deal of effort, including with legal counsel and HR director, goes into that. And I feel that the compensation package is... And, uh, I feel that the compensation package is, is inadequate or is designed to, as a bonus, to retain, that the proper form would be through those collective bargaining agreements as they stand. I will be voting no on this matter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cuzmano. And for the record, I think that's a, that's a fair comment. I think that's issues that we discussed internally before proposing this adjustment. I think, at least for myself, um, I'm just falling on the side of, um, we are having, at times, difficulty finding good people. And the ability to retain staff in today's environment, um, is becoming more of a need. Um, and I think as trustee, or Treasurer Gillette noted earlier, is that sometimes the best employees are your, you know, to hire are your own. So, uh, a, a, a well-motivated and content workforce, I think, will do much better for the citizens of the township and deliver better services. And, um, having one good employee is better than having three bad ones. That, that's, I understand your, your points and I agree with them, but.
Mr. Chair, if I might have a comment. You know, I think the goal, my, my goal when elected here, and I think the goal shared by this board, is to deliver the best value and services to residents that we can possibly do. Uh, and there's no way we can deliver the best services that we can without having the best people we have. It's always been my philosophy, I'd rather have fewer people and pay them competitively than have more people pay them low and not get the same kind of results. We wanna retain the, the quality employees we have. This is a very difficult, challenging job market these last few months. Uh, our township has struggled to fill positions that have been vacant. Uh, we're competing against Taco Bell, who's giving a seventeen-year-old kid a five hundred dollar bonus, you know, to, to start up work. Uh, but we're competing for more experienced talent than that. So, uh, in the interest of doing, of continuing our mission, of making that mission as successful as possible, of delivering the best quality we can, and, and a team, we need a team to do it. And, uh, we've got some amazingly great team members here. It's in the best interest of the residents, the best interest of service we provide, to maintain that team, develop that team, and continue everybody with that same focus to delivering that value to residents. That's why I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Mr. Supervisor, for the record, I would just like to say I'm in perfect agreement with you and Treasurer Drollette, that we need to, uh, pay these people, uh, this stipend to make sure that they, they will retain their positions here. And I don't think it's, uh, out of the ordinary, considering the job market and what's going on, uh, with our economy.
Thank you, trustee Nevers.
If I could just kinda piggyback off of that, as an employer myself in the private sector, um, I just know from experience too, it's kinda somewhat what the supervisor was saying, is that outside of these, um, you know, union negotiations and things like that, it's kinda nice to know that you're just appreciated for the job you do and how much you mean to the township. So, uh, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Any other discussion? There's a motion by Supervisor Viviano, um, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve an employee retention bonus for full-time employees in the amount of six hundred dollars per person. And for employees, for part-time employees who were employed as of January first and still employed as of July first of twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per person. Uh, the anticipated total being eighty-six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Members please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. So that brings us to the, uh, total general appropriations act. So at this time, is there a motion to adopt the general appropriations act for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as amended by these motions, by these amendments? So move?
Support.
Any discussion on the budget? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to approve, to ad, I'm sorry, to adopt the general appropriations act for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as amended. Clerk Posey, would call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Drollette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cuzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That, uh, ah, sorry. The general appropriation act for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is adopted.
Congratulations, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy, for all your hard work this year. All right, moving on to our last item of the evening, we have a request to approve the purchase of office furniture. This would be utilizing Omni Partners Cooperative Contract from the Office Express in the amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Move to approve?
Support.
So this item is part of our, um, basement renovation project. This would equip the basement, and not only do we have some office space that we have to furnish, uh, but we are purchasing, um, forty, um, tables, modular tables, the word I was looking for, and nesting collapsible chairs that can be used in various configurations as we anticipate using the basement for all number of reasons, including, and most importantly, for an election center. I think there is a confirmation of process memo in the board packet. The Office Express is a pre-approved, uh, state vendor. Any discussion?
I just have one question. On the quantity for office furniture, it says one for just under eleven thousand four hundred.
That's the off, that's the office suite. Yeah, desks, uh,
It's like a combination of a bunch of, because I just saw a quantity.
It's desk.
Really nice chair.
Desk, credenza, filing cabinet.
Got it.
Shelves. It's an, it's an office, it's a full office, so.
It's a package.
Package, thank you, thank you for the-
Thank you.
Any other questions? Really nice chair. All right, uh, motion by clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchase of the office furniture utilizing Omni Partners Cooperative Contract in the amount, from Office Express, in the amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our second public comment of the evening, this would be for non-agenda items. Um, if anyone wishes to speak, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Uh, if there is anyone who is participating remotely, would digitally raise your hand, you will be called upon. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak? No one making up, anyone remotely? No? No public comment tonight, so we're gonna move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
No comments for me tonight.
Oh, okay. Don't be shy. Trustee Nevers?
I have no further comment tonight.
Oh, trustee Nevers passes.
I get all that extra time.
You do.
Couple things. Stacy, you must dream numbers. There is a lot of work here, so I wanna personally thank you, along with the board, for all your efforts. This is great. The format's different, I noticed. For me, it was anyways, but I liked it.
You just got new glasses.
So thank you. The, the other thing, I wanna compliment the two residents, along with, uh, Jim and all the staff that worked on Chelsea Park. It was a first for us, but, uh, it, it really proved that when the public and government get together, work together, things do happen. The wheel turns slow, I'll be the first to admit that, but it does turn. So, again, thank everybody involved. And, um, thank the new firefighter for staying on with us, being promoted, so I appreciate that, chief, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Cuzmano?
No comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cuzmano. Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to join in the, uh, the appreciation to our finance department, our CFO, the great work that they do putting together this budget. Also, uh, to the, to you, Mr. Supervisor, for, uh, incorporating more involvement into the budget process by the full board. Um, it's the greatest extent, to a greater extent possible than ever did. Uh, and also, um, just to note that, uh, the budget is, of course, a, a, a challenge about allocating resources in ways that we think, uh, will best benefit the residents. And there's always difficult decisions that have been made about how to re, allocate resources, how to reallocate resources in ways that we think is in the best interest of residents. There's gonna be disagreements in that process, and we have had some of those, but the mission is the same, even with those disagreements. And the mission is, you know, how can we allocate the resources in a way that maximizes a benefit to residents? How can we do more with less? So we've had an opportunity in the last couple of budgets to lower a couple inter, uh, millage rates. We're looking at lowering, uh, you know, we proposed a lower parks and rec budget, yet we found a way to get more money into the parks and rec. So this has been a great process, uh, I think everybody's worked together as a team, even with disagreements, toward that same goal, is, well, how can we allocate resources that benefits the residents the most? Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd too like to congratulate the promotional, uh, the firefighter that was on probation, that has been moved up to the full-time position. Also, um, I just wanna note that I do appreciate all the hard work and services that our employees put into servicing the residents, because they are, they are on the front line and they're the ones that are servicing the residents and assisting us on the backend to help us do our job and make these decisions. So I'm thankful for them and also believe that they, um, you know, deserve this, um, bonus that we've, uh, approved this evening. On a voter information note, um, your application, if you choose to vote by mail, um, if you were on our permanent absent voter list, uh, you have received your application in the mail. If you did not, please contact our office so that we can get that to you. Also, um, last week, an informational-only letter went out to voters in an effort to educate them on how to return that application. Um, when we put the database together to send the information to our voters, um, on our permanent absent voter list, the data, data was distorted when it was sent to the printer, and unfortunately, some of the names and addresses did not match up. The information in the letter was, um, intended for the individual that is on the address. And, um, there is no voter fraud, there, it was simply a clerical error, so we deeply apologize for any concern or inconvenience this caused to any of our voters in McComb Township, but rest assured, it has been rectified. That's all I have.
Thank you, clerk Posey. Um, I guess I wanna also thank Stacy and the finance team, who is, and sort of note that not only did they put this budget together that we make them jump through hoops about, but, uh, she's been doing it down thirty-three percent of her staff. So, thank you and thank Amy for all the hard work you've put in these past few months. Hopefully, we can fill that vacant position very soon. What, well, after the, what is the net effect, if you know, or can guesstimate, of our budget after the amendments on the remaining balance? If I remember, I think we are still in the, gonna show a surplus of around three hundred-ish?
In just the general fund, or the funds that you combine?
Combined funds.
Combined funds is, I think, six hundred?
Should've asked you earlier.
The combined funds, it's six hundred and sixty-three thousand five nineteen in the black.
So this, so we're gonna show a surplus this year, and that's after committing a million dollars to park improvements? Doubling our sidewalk gap closure program? Um, Investing in Chelsea Park? Investing in Chelsea Park for the first time, doing a residential road program, continuing to fund our road improvements that are coming this year with Garfield. So I think Stacy and all the department heads should be congratulating and put together a very aggressive budget, and I'm looking forward to a successful year, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to comment that there is going to be, or there is now an opening on the bo, uh, public library board again. Mr. Mike Letito, who has been a long-serving board member, has recently resigned from the board and is relocating and retiring. Uh, Mike has been a great board member from McComb Township. If there is anyone interested in serving on the library board, my office will be accepting applications over the next week. Please contact the supervisor's office or, or look on our website for, um, board, the board, uh, I'm sorry, the, there's an application that you can find on the website. Uh, we will be accepting applications until June fifteenth, so it's about a week. Uh, and a reminder that the township offices will be closed on Monday, June twentieth, for a federal holiday. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So move?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cuzmano, to adjourn the meeting, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.